Yes, there we are. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Todd. Public Works and Soundman. Thank you. Okay, thank you Greg for noticing that.
It was Tom, actually.
Tom?
I'm so south spoken, I need all the help I can get.
What? In the consent agenda, item line, let's see, F, consider approval of mayor's appointment to the library board. That will be Roger Hibma, and his appointment will take place effective July 1, 2018. Line item G, consider approval of changing the meeting day for the first meeting in July. July 4 falls on a Wednesday, so we would like to host our meeting on Tuesday, July 3 at 12 o'clock noon. Other than that, any questions, comments regarding the consent agenda? If not, do we have a motion to approve those items?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. And may I have a roll call, please? Hamel?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Hint?
Aye.
Gills?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Thank you. Going into new business, and this is in consideration of rezoning lots 2 and 3 of Block 53A of the second addition. The public hearing is now open. Are there any public comments? Consideration of rezoning. Again, this is rezoning to Arterio Commercial.
This is the first picture in our...
Yes.
That says Sheldon Green.
That Sean provided up here. Obviously, the circled item, it's right after the Quonset Hut as you're going south on South Third Avenue on the west side. It would be the Sheldon Green owns that property.
That is correct. The owner is here if you would like to ask any questions.
Hello, everybody. Have you received anything in writing?
No.
Thank you.
Clarification, the amendment talks about 10 and a portion of 9 as well?
That's the second.
Because lots 2, 3, 10, and a portion of 9, that's separate?
But that's a 53A.
Okay.
They're close, but there's other properties in the neighborhood, correct?
Yes, yes, yes.
That are not...
We'll go further down the block on the next item.
All right.
So right now, there are no comments. Is there a motion to close?
So moved.
The public hearing?
Both in Block 53A.
Yes, thank you.
Do you want to ride away some of the...
Yep.
So there's a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second? Thank you. And a roll call to close? Eggers?
Aye.
Hint?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Gills?
Aye.
Thank you. And now we need to take...
Make the motion to approve the zoning request.
Thank you. Questions or comments? I assume there's not, since we didn't have any in the public hearing. We already have motions. May I have a roll call, please? Brewster?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Hint?
Aye.
Gills?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, the second public hearing, yes?
Pardon me, but for clarification, I believe there will be a resolution that memorializes that, so we've actually just approved that resolution.
Approved by resolution, correct. I should have stated by resolution. Thank you. So now, the public hearing on line item number 5 is open, and this is in consideration of lots 10 and a portion of lot 9 in Block 53A. That will be the second copy, map copy, that you have there. You'll notice that that one house has been removed. So lot 9, is that the portion with the house, or is lot 9 the portion that is empty with the driveway going through it? Which one is 10 and which one is 9?
9 would be the one with the home on it.
9 is the one with the home, okay. Again, these would be Arterio, Commercial. And what portion, then, would not be changed, since, you know, Greg had brought that up? If it's just a portion of 9, what does that...
Correct me if I'm wrong, but is the person requesting the change already own the other portion of 9?
Yes.
Got it.
Yeah, I thought so.
Okay, because I just wanted to be sure. All right. Any public comments?
So just, I guess from my clarification, when I'm looking at this picture, and I'm looking at 9 as 10 adjacent to it?
Yes.
Okay. And 9...
And the home has been removed.
Right. So, and the request is coming from landowner?
10 is down. This is 9, this is 10.
This is 9, this is 10.
Okay, and then what is this here?
That's a residential property.
And that's not in play at all?
No, this lot here.
So what's the partial of 9 that...
Right here.
That there, okay. Thank you for clarification on that.
Jimmy, did you knock that house in? Did you get to do that? No? Sure, I'd like to have been a part of that, but, okay. Any other comments? Are there any public comments? I'd like to take a motion, then, if I could, to close the public hearing?
So moved. Support.
Thank you. And a roll call to close the public hearing? Hamel?
Aye.
Hint?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Gills?
Aye.
Thank you. And then, council, do you have any other questions or comments regarding the rezoning of lots 10 and a portion of 9 in Block 53A of the second addition? If not, we would need a motion to approve by resolution of the rezoning.
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. Last request for your comments, questions, clarity? May I have a roll call, please? Eggers?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Hint?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Gills?
Aye.
Awesome, thank you. Well, number 6, we get to talk about some sewer revenue capital loan notes, just when you think you're done. This is more of a housekeeping, like we choose to use that word for every time this comes up, but there are two action items underneath the $7,840,000 sewer revenue capital loan note, Series 2018. The first is by resolution appointing paying agent, note register, and transfer agent, approving the paying agent and note register and transfer agent, and authorizing the execution of the agreement. Lots of words, and in layman's terms, Sean?
This is, the agent would be the person that's actually paying, we're arranging to pay the debt. So it's set forth, and we'll transfer the money, and then they'll make sure that it's credited to the proper account. So there's thousands and thousands of accounts that these paying agents are responsible for, and they'll make sure that ours is placed in the proper account, so. So it's going through that, it's authorizing that paying agent to pay on behalf of the city.
Just when we thought we weren't going to talk about it anymore, it comes back on the agenda. So if you have questions, wonderful. If not, we would need a motion to approve by resolution.
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. Since there's no agents, may I have a roll call, please? Hint?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Gills?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Crazy, all the paperwork, you wonder how many trees we've gone through. The second part is by approval by resolution, approving and authorizing a form of loan agreement, and authorizing and providing for the issuance of capital loan notes, and providing for a method of payment of the notes, approving the tax exemption certificate, and approving the continuing disclosure certificate. Go ahead.
So, again, we, it's memorializing the type of payment, it's verifying that we are a tax exempt organization, and then we, by law, have to disclose any debt that the city has, and the paying agent and this company will certify that our debt is disclaimed properly by federal law.
Thank you for that explanation.
Make the motion to approve the resolution.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Questions, comments, discussion? May I have a roll call, please? Hamel?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Hint?
Aye.
Gills?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, moving right along. Number 7 on our agenda is we have a pay estimate to consider, and this is for our wastewater treatment facility, and it is in the amount of $169,000, and I have to get to that page, $555.52, am I correct, off of memory?
Yes.
Yes. So our first payment would be in the amount of $169,555.52. Things are moving right along, Todd?
Things are moving along just fine. Yep, they're making good progress. They're looking at forming some more concrete again next week. They've got a couple of structures forward. Hope to get the floorboard of the Inlet Works building next week, so. We had a progress meeting again this morning. We're holding them, at least through the beginning of this project, we're holding them every two weeks. So far, I'm happy, the engineer's happy, the contractor seems happy, so.
Good deal. Very good.
Make the motion to approve the number 1 pay estimate?
Support.
Support.
Thank you. And may I have a roll call, please? Hint?
Aye.
Gills?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Thanks. And number 8 is considering approval of a change order, number 1, on the wastewater treatment facility, and it is to the credit of $16,042. Do you want to share with us, Todd, the breakdown?
That is a deduct of just over $16,000. The reason for the deduct is there's some paving we're getting credit for. We have switched the location of some of the manhole structures. Since design, which means we don't have to remove some paving that we were going to, the contractor offered an alternative method of waterproofing the basement of the Inlet Works building that we have agreed to in theory, so that'll save us $4,000. And then, the other credit is for insulating the exterior of the basement walls of the Inlet Works building. That's something that an architect added in design, a subcontractor, DGR, my, between myself and others, we deemed it not necessary, so we're excluding that portion as well. I do have, not in your packets, but I do have verification that all these are fair values of deduct.
Wonderful.
In terms of waterproofing, you said in theory, you've approved it in theory. What did you mean by in theory?
Well, you guys have to approve it.
Okay, that's what I wanted, subject to approval here.
Correct.
Not approval from the architect or the engineer.
I've agreed to it, that it's, I and the engineer have agreed that it is as effective of a method as what was proposed in the plans.
Okay.
Just cheaper way to do it.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions? And if not, do we have a motion to approve change order number 1 on the wastewater treatment facility project?
So moved. Support.
Thank you. And a roll call, please? Hamel?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Gills?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Hint?
Aye.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, we're skipping over to number 10, is discussion on the no parking all night and 2-hour parking limit in the downtown district. Also, a little discussion on parking on East 6th Street. It used to be, in the downtown district, and when I say that, I mean 9th Street between 2nd Avenue and here to 5th Avenue, correct me if I'm wrong, Lyle, I'm not trying to do some memory, and then portions of 3rd Avenue and 4th Avenue from 8th to 10th, they were in a 2-hour limit and a no parking zone overnight, between 2:00 AM and 6:00 PM, is that correct?
6:00 AM.
6:00 AM, thank you. When we did our downtown rehabilitation project, we didn't rehang signs back up, and now we're back in a city owners concerned about parking that is happening not only overnight, but also all day long affecting spaces for customers. And the request for signs to go back up. We cannot hang the signs on the poles, there are new poles, but we could do it at the quarters, but I wanted to have a little discussion first. One of the problems that we also have is when it comes to street sweeping, I've noticed. Our street sweeper sometimes has a hard time going through the downtown because cars of the renters that live downtown, if they've permerged, saying they've had to go out and sweep the curb up. Brad, where are you gonna...
Can we maybe break these up into three different?
Hmm?
Instead of trying to discuss all three of them at once?
Sure, right now, I'm just doing downtown.
Okay, I was thinking, if you're gonna get, you know, because there's different discussions for each one.
Right, so I would like to talk about downtown, which I'm just setting the stage in some of the comments that I've gotten, and I know one time I went downtown to visit with the store merchant, Brad happened to be down there as well, polling the different merchants on your main concern that you had heard, Brad, was overnight parking, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what I had heard was the 2-hour parking, and that wasn't something that we went out and chalked the tires, and, but when the signs were up, it was a little more of a could remind people that this isn't your all-day parking, we do have community parking lots for that, try to leave those spaces open for consumers to purpose.
Sure.
And the convenience, so they don't have to drive around a few times.
Sure.
So first, let's talk overnight parking in the downtown-only district.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
From the way I understand, is that the only difference between before the renovation and after renovation is, is that the signs didn't get put back up, otherwise, the expectation has not changed as far as any kind of action by the city to change that, correct?
That's what I'd like to clarify. There's a couple of emails going through, and could you clarify, what is in our code right now? Is it, did we ever change anything, or is it still saying overnight in the downtown district?
Doesn't actually say that in our code. We've all searched for it, it's not there.
All right.
We're all sure it was, and we've all searched and searched, and it's not there.
All right, because I was wondering, if it was there, did we change it? And if we didn't change it, then it's just a matter of having those courtesy signs back up.
If the ordinance exists, in order to properly repeal it, you would have had to take action to repeal it.
Right.
Now, there's a requirement under Iowa law that the code of ordinances be compiled, but that has to do with evidentiary proof as opposed to whether, and not necessarily as to whether an ordinance is actually valid or not.
Okay.
So if there is an ordinance that was passed that prohibits downtown parking...
Overnight?
Overnight, unless this body specifically referenced that ordinance to amend or repeal it, it's arguably still effective.
Okay.
But obviously, you want to give notice to people.
Oh, absolutely. We're not just going to slap a sign up. That's why I wanted to have this more of a discussion.
So if that's the case, then, what is the discussion?
I guess the signs would have to go back up.
Mm-hmm.
And so, does this body need to vote on having the signs put back up, or does it need to happen?
If it is in effect, I don't know why we have to do anything.
Put the signs back up.
Only if you're going to...
There is a code, there is an ordinance that was passed many years ago regarding that, and I cannot find where it was ever repealed.
And we have signs, if I remember right, when I drove around and looked, we have signs on 8th Street between, yeah, and then 4th Avenue, all three blocks, if I remember right.
10th Street.
10th Street, one block in front of the church, and then it's just the five blocks that we redid, the signs aren't there.
Exactly. Where the new poles came in is where they were missing, and then that's why I think we're having the hiccup of the problem of the overnight parking.
The signs were all removed in 2013 as part of, they were not included to be reinstalled as part of that project. Then, at that point, discussed and decided that we didn't clutter the entire downtown with all the signs, and we didn't have to, they were never installed. But if you want to read what it would have prior to streetscape.
Sure. What effort will that take?
Just a matter of either cutting out some concrete and attaching some new poles, at least some locations.
On the corners? Or do you need them mid-block?
Micah, will you withhold a ticket that's with a sign that's only on that corner? Makes sense if it's enforceable, folks.
Exactly.
But we have overnight parking signs during the wintertime on the outskirts of town, so would be the difference of that compared to downtown when you just put them on the entrances of each block?
I think that would be a starting point, myself.
I guess what I'd like to just...
We don't scatter those signs throughout town that there's no overnight parking in residential.
You're right, Brad, there's one on every entrance to the community.
Yeah, so if you put it on each side of the block, on the steel poles...
The big silver poles, right?
But we'll still have to add some poles. There's not a steel pole on every corner in a location that's suitable, but that's not a huge deal, Brad. It's about 30 steel light pole, it'll be about $55 if I gotta buy the sign and a new post.
Okay.
Labor's a labor, I don't, I don't even add that up.
Tom, what were you gonna say?
I was just saying, all these are really pertinent-ish, but as far as, what I'd be more interested in is a proposal from, from the street department, and what it's going to delete, and what can we enforce, and then act upon whatever that proposal is. That would be my suggestion. Because rather than...
Yeah, to tag along with Councilman Eggers' statement, I would suggest that the, and if there is language in it that you would want to update, this would be a good time to do it for public comment.
Absolutely. And then, also, I'd like to see if it said anything about the 2-hour limit. I don't know if those are...
I am unaware of any documentation, the MUTCD, that's going to tell me how many and where I must place no parking and/or 2-hour parking signs for them to be imposed.
I really think that's correct.
There's a manual of uniform traffic control devices, and I do not believe that that says anywhere or gives any direction on no parking or 2-hour parking that I'm aware.
Sure.
Unless you...
Well, yeah, and, you know, I'm the one that gets called when people are unhappy because they weren't aware of it, so, you know, I feel like, you know, for instance, we looked out my office window, and there's a light pole kind of by, kind of by that intersection of, it would be difficult to really just put a sign there, and then not have another one until the next corner. I just, I feel like that would be a...
Sure.
People weren't aware.
No different than the winter parking, yeah.
Right.
No different, Lyle, than the winter parking.
Sure, but I think it's going to be a communication on our effort, and also, you know, and visit all...
CD's sent out a blast.
Yeah, CD's sent out a blast. I'm glad they go visit with all the businesses downtown to remind them that this, we didn't put them back up, because they've been asking, and I don't want to say all of them.
Yes, if you'd like to, the firemen are...
Yes, I do. That's why I'll be glad to go in and talk with them.
No.
The firemen are the store owners and the people that rent the store owners apartments among the building.
Yeah.
That's the firemen, there's the 2-hour parking and overnight parking in downtown. Because you go to the blocks that don't have apartments, there's not a vehicle parked on the corner.
Right.
It's only the blocks with apartments.
I personally believe that by taking care of the 2:00 AM, the 6:00 AM parking will alleviate a lot of those same vehicles during the day.
I think so, too. I think that's true.
And just food for thought, I got involved with one of them 2-hour parking things a number of years ago, and by the time I was done working it, everyone in an entire block was mad, and I just think we want to be cautious as far as that enforcement.
And that's why we're having the discussion, and that's why it will be communicated, but at the same time, and the reason I'm bringing it up now is, so many of those merchants, when we did that streetscape, they were not happy when we changed the way we wanted to do our parking, so then we changed it again so that we wouldn't take away too many of our parking spaces, if all you recall this. So we changed it to the diagonal parking, angled parking, whatever you want to call it, yeah. And some of those key people that came in complaining are now some of the offenders who are parking out there all day, so I'll be more than happy to go out there if we decide to do this and remind them what we'd like to have in place so that it's good for their customers. So, not asking you, just, I'll help you out, but we wanted to have the communication started so that we can relay it to them. So I think where we need to start first is bringing this back, checking, let's dig into the old dusty, old, old ordinances, try to find it, we'll bring it back to our next council meeting so that we can see exactly what it says, clean it up, and then move on, but we will communicate with the downtown.
Then I would like to have the discussion on each one of the three items.
Hmm.
That way, because now we're talking about two at the same time, and...
Right, so when we, let's see what the ordinance says, and if there's two separate or if they fall into the same thing, okay?
They're two separate orders.
All right, and then we'll bring those back separately.
Because like in April, I talked to 17 businesses, 15 of them said enforce the overnight parking. That's the only thing I talked about, was overnight.
Right, what I went on was 2-hour.
One said no, and one had no opinion because they were still mad over the streetscape.
Yep.
So...
So, I have a question to follow up on Tom's comment. Who's providing a signage plan? Am I, or is he? Because they're going to be different.
Hey, do you guys want to sit down and talk about it?
No, because we won't come to a resolution.
I think it's the Public Works, you're in charge of signs.
And he's in charge of enforcement of signs.
Lyle, let's chat, and then we'll tell Todd what he can do, how's it?
Because I can provide you with the cost.
Yep.
Right, that's simple. I just need to know the number of signs and which ones.
Okay.
But since there's not specific direction given in the MUTCD, I think it's potentially up to our opinion, and mine and Lyle's are going to differ, and mine's going to differ because I don't want to put up 100 signs downtown, and Lyle's is going to be different because the more signs, the easier it is to enforce.
Sure.
So I don't see the police department and Public Works coming to an agreement.
You guys can get, let's...
I would also, now regarding the 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM, I think we want to look at what blocks that applies to, because I think some of those blocks might not make that much sense.
Exactly, and that's why I think...
They're just the three, on 9th Street and the two on 3rd Avenue.
Yes.
Right, so let's get that ordinance first to see...
Are you talking existing ones?
Well, I'm talking the old plan where the old signs were. I think some of those areas really doesn't make a lot of sense.
Like across from the St. Pat School?
Yes, that's what I'm talking about.
Yes. That's what I'm talking about.
I think when we get the ordinance, we can clean it up and determine where exactly it needs to be now. Okay. So let's get that after we find out what the ordinance says. And, and yeah, I agree, Todd, I don't, we don't need a hundred signs up there. It'd be.
Reclutter.
Well, yep. Yep. We want it to look nice and welcoming. No parking, no parking, no parking.
And I'll just throw it out there, right smack of the list over here.
Yep.
Worse than a flower pot.
Just put them on the, on the corners.
Yep. We'll figure it out. But thank you. So then the other part of this discussion is, um, Rod Funkert had come in and visited with us at one of our past meetings, I believe it was in May, and had concerns about the parking along E6 Street on the north side, um, when track events happen. And shortly after that, we had drove through there, and I think, Lyle, you had been through there too, and that is congestion when we have track events. Parking is allowed on the south side of E6 Street between Nineteenth Avenue and Twenty-third Avenue. On the north side, the only place that it is allowed is kinda by the lilac bushes to the east to Twenty-third Avenue after 4:30. So, after four, thank you. So what happened was we had some people parking there just before four. But then it can cause a little bit confusion of when you can and can't park there. Instead of having that little sliver of maybe a block's worth of no parking until after four, I would just like to recommend that we eventually change that to be all the north side of E6 Street between Nineteenth Avenue and Twenty-third Avenue to be all no parking. Because when we do have school events, there is no way a fire truck or an ambulance will get through if they're allowed to park on both sides. And I think it'll be easier to enforce knowing that there's just no parking on that side of the road ever. Even with the parking on the south side, it gets tight. But when it was both sides, it wasn't good. So there's three signs that could just be changed out. Now, is that also an ordinance we'd have to look into and bring back? We'll check into it. Is there, has anyone else heard anything after, uh, Rod had come in and visited with us or called? Okay. I don't know if you've ever driven through there when, when sporting events are taking place, but it is dangerous if we ever had an emergency. I don't even know if a police car would get there, through there safely with two sides. I mean, it's tough. My Ford Edge, I had a hard time. It was very tight just getting through there. So that would be my recommendation is, let's look into it, if that's an ordinance, and if it is, I'd like to bring it back to our next council meeting. Uh, and if the public has something they'd like to share, great. Otherwise, I would like to see that whole thing, no parking. Okay. Also, E6 Street, remember to slow down. It worked when we talked about it last time. People are starting to speed again through that race zone, so just a heads up.
So Mayor, just for clarification again, once and if an ordinance is found, what we will be discussing at our next council meeting, if I am understanding you correctly, is an amendment to that ordinance then? Okay. So that, so there will be an amendment circulated to us on what that would look like before the meeting then?
Probably not. I'm, I'm gonna give you guys the original ordinances.
Yeah, not the amended.
I'm not gonna amend anything.
No.
I don't know what you, I'm gonna give you the original ordinance.
Would be on the E6, because that would be a change.
That's what I was hearing, and that's why I was worried.
I'm sure there isn't an ordinance on E6.
So let me ask, is that just a matter of let's change it out?
I do not have the authority to construct signs without your guys' approval.
See, and, okay.
Sixty-nine thirteen.
I think there, we'll look for an ordinance. I don't think there's a.
If there's not.
What we're gonna need there if you want to change it is, Todd, get rid of the 4:30 signs and put up no parking all the time. If that can support, that can be.
That's what I'd like to see. Okay. Three signs.
Thanks for the clarification.
Yep. And, and I was thinking we just had to direct you to do that, and then I was also told that, no, it might be by ordinance, so we had to check. So I wasn't sure. That's why I wanted to make this a discussion. But if you would like to take action on that, I would welcome it.
I guess, Micah, maybe I need some clarification, because that is a little confusing when I was researching this. The downtown is done by ordinance. However, I found mostly in the minutes, all the other areas, like the schools, the churches, those are only done through a motion and second of the council.
My analysis here, as I sit here, is that we have a hybrid approach. We have by ordinance taken action in certain areas such as downtown, Thirty-Fourth Avenue, Park Street.
That's McDonald's area, right?
Those areas, and, uh, other decisions have been made through apparently motion or resolution. So we'll look into that.
Okay. We'll look into it, and then we'll bring that back too. And that could be just a matter of taking action. But I think, I think it'll help you guys too. It'll help better communicate also that there's just no parking on that north side of E6 Street. Any other discussion about the parking?
The only thing is, you know, you have parking, I believe, on the east side, no parking signs on the east side of the middle school on that street. I'm not sure what the hours are that. Is it something that you want to make consistent?
On Twenty-third Avenue?
I believe, I'd have to verify, but I believe that area that you're discussing is like during school hours.
Yeah, and you have the same thing at night when there's an event going on there. You have cars on both sides of the middle school.
Pretty rare, I think.
More than along E6 Street.
More events.
Yeah. Yeah, they park them both.
In the fire lane of the school.
I just throw it out there, as you're talking it, do you want to just look at the whole thing? But I'm just throwing it out there, you don't have to.
Undifference that I will, if you want to think about it.
Yeah.
Undifference between those two areas is the north side of E6 has no homes. The east side, Twenty-third has homes.
That's correct.
Right.
So now you're affecting somebody's parking in front of their own.
Thank you for saying that, because that's.
That's where they're different.
Yeah. I just threw it out there.
If there's any parking, then it should be on the west side of schools.
Right.
Just for discussion. Just throwing it out there for discussion.
And that's why, when we had talked about it, Lyle, after Rod had called us, that's one thing you and I had chatted about, there's no houses on that north side, so everybody on the south side has room to park on the streets still. All right. All right. Thank you, gentlemen. And lady, let's move on then to number eleven. Todd, you have some information and discussion on employee safety training you would like to share with us.
Sure.
Okay.
We are currently a member of the Northwest Iowa Safety Group, which includes thirteen communities. And essentially what we do is, uh, once a year, Sheldon, Orange City, and Sioux Center, which are the three largest of those thirteen, get together and say, hey, over the next six months, we're gonna hold, uh, safety meetings on topics A, B, C, D. Some are required, uh, some are extras we throw in. And then Sioux Center Health administers those safety programs, finds speakers, and, and that's what we currently do for our safety program. Representatives from Sioux Center, Orange City, myself, and Rock Rapids Municipal Utilities, who is also a member, have been discussing that we would like to improve our safety program. We feel that we could better serve our employees by offering more in-depth training. And, um, also, we are, we're all in the same boat of needing some assistance and staying on top of all rules and regulations when it comes to safety, whether it's, whether it's OSHA, whether it's, uh, new, new hazards that are out there. We're not safety-specific people, but there's others out there that are. So the four of us have been meeting, and we actually recently took proposals from two different companies to provide, uh, for communities. What we are all for going to do, or well, for in the process of doing, is acting and asking our respective boards and our councils, will you allow us to continue to move forward? Will you allow us to, uh, potentially start a new program by January one of 2019? I'll consume those costs in my existing budget for the first six months of the program, but by budget time, I can have more solid numbers for you on an exact cost. Our current program does not cost very much money. The new program, worst-case scenario for Sheldon, would be around twenty-four thousand dollars a year. That number will go down. Essentially, what we're looking at doing is hiring a, um, community or a safety coordinator that would go to multiple communities. One advantage for us is when we, if we offered a class on lockout-tagout, that currently we all drive to Sioux Center and we meet for lockout-tagout. Here, the way we're proposing the new program to go, we would have lockout-tagout here in Sheldon along with in Sioux Center and Orange City and Rock Rapids. So you could specify, or you could tailor the program to the Sheldon Wastewater Treatment Plant or the Sheldon Water Treatment Plant. We think there are other communities in the thirteen that will want to join on as full-share members, meaning get all the inspections, get help with the safety data sheets, get help with all the right-to-know manuals and make sure they're up to date. But we don't believe, talking that we want to allow all thirteen members to become full share. While that would reduce our costs, I think it would be, uh, counterproductive as far as getting a better safety program to each of our communities. What we likely would do is allow more of them to join, similar to what we have now, is they can show up and attend our safety meetings to get some training in their community. And we actually believe there's several of those thirteen that that's all they'll want to do. They will not want to spend the money or spend that much time improving a safety program. So now that I've probably royally confused you, what questions do you have for me?
Well, and, and one of the other things that, that Todd and I had discussed, hi- his number of twenty-four thousand was based on, on four members. But within that, there, there could also be a change in the formula, so it's just not divided by four, but by population, employee base, and so forth, so.
Correct. We, we have a very rough formula already that I think the four of us need to refine and come up with fair. But yeah, it's based on a flat fee just to be part of it. And then it's so much an employee and so much for population. That way, the biggers pay more. We've also discussed changing the formula up so that if you're full municipal and you have gas and electric employees, which we do not, should that carry a higher value because there's some more specialized training that those folks need that, uh, that my street guys maybe don't? So I think there's refinement, and there's a lot of work to do on our end to, to break ground, but essentially, the four of us are to the point, we all feel like it's the right thing to do. We all feel like it's best for our employees. We feel like it's best for our community. But we don't want to put tons and tons of hours in developing this full plan to find out that , uh, our councils and our boards are not interested in, in spending that kind of money because we understand it's, it's a substantial amount of money.
If you have a person that's gonna do the record keeping, that's worth a lot. And then if you have an issue, it's sure gonna help to be up to date.
So if we would have an OSHA event, we would guarantee we'd be up to date. And also, you've got the safety coordinator to help you walk through the process because their job is going to be safety in just more than one community. I can't justify it just here in Sheldon.
Right.
I would say by looking at that end of it, it's worthwhile looking into it.
And, and realistically, I'd like to say I can get that number down into the, you know, I don't know, fifteen to eighteen thousand. But worst-case scenario, if, if only us four joined, we'd be looking at twenty-three to twenty-four thousand dollars.
Just curious, what's the total estimated cost of the program?
Between a hundred and a hundred and ten thousand. We, we took, we took, uh, presentations from two different outfits, Pete. Uh, one being the Iowa Association of Municipal Utilities, and, um, one actually being, it's a partnership through NCC. So there are, there's a group called Vector that is currently, um, run through NCC that does safety training for a bunch of other small towns in this area. We asked if, hey, Vector, can we just join in? And, and they said no. They said no because us four that are currently looking have more population and more employees than their twelve town Vector group already. But there could be some advantages of going through the, making a Vector Two, for lack of a better term, because now you have two coordinators working out of the same office. And even though they're, they're servicing different communities, there, there's advantages together. They could work together.
I say continue to pursue it. Check it out.
So, so, you know, the first year, let's say I'm, let's say that's the worst-case scenario number, I would need to eat around twelve thousand dollars between, uh, January one and June thirty out of my existing department budgets. I can, I'll find a spot to absorb that. But by the time we get to budget, I can have a full-fledged plan to put in front of you saying, this is our true cost, and, and this is how we formulated it, and so on and so. We simply, in my opinion, and others, be doing a better job of safety training.
Todd, to that effect, can you maybe articulate a little bit more on what the return on investment would be for that? We're talking about the investment side pretty heavily here, but we're talking safety, and, and everyone understands that safety is important. But how will this move the, move the mark as far as the, our intent to make this, you know, their jobs and environment more safe?
I, I think the simplest answer to that is I would, uh, I would say better training, more training should result in reduced work comp claims, should result in reduced, um, loss of employee work time because of job site injuries. If we ever had a bad event, um, whether it be a, a team member lose a finger or an arm or, or something much, much worse, having everything done and done properly, I don't know how you even quantify that, Tom, but it would, it would save us substantially at that point. And I would feel better knowing that we've provided the best
Right.
uh, training and opportunities for our staff that we can.
I agree with what Todd's saying. There's, there's some real, um, risk involved with the whole subject of public safety and work site safety. That, if you wanted to dig in far enough, you can actually put dollars and cents to it, unfortunately. But it's, uh, insurance companies do it day in and day out. Uh, independent companies deal with this day in and day out as well, too. So, uh, so I'm in support of the direction that you're proposing to go on this. I just think that we, if we can, be able to encapsulate a little, as much as we can, what that return on investment would be so that everyone understands that, so.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's something I should be able to put better dollars to you for at a, at a later date.
Correct.
We still, by we, I mean the four that are talking, we still need to, 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 to finish exactly writing, writing a job description for this person. We're not looking at rewriting the book. There's other ones out there. But just making it maybe form-fitted to our communities and then find out how many want to join us.
Along the lines of this individual, is that gonna be a contracted position with responsibilities on all communities, or how is that gonna be structured?
So, so, so depending upon which route we would go, if we went with IMU, that would be an IMU employee that followed the direction of IMU. If we went the, uh, if we copied the Vector route somehow, the person would actually be an employee of Northwest Iowa Community College under the direction of whatever we name our group. So we would form a board of directors. There'd be some sort of a twenty-eight E agreement of the, of the multi-use person. And then, uh, the, the person would answer actually to the board of directors, which, you know, I would likely be a part of, Representative from Orange City would be a part of, and, and other full-share member of communities, I guess. So we would have specific, I mean, and, and they've given us some of that, like, you'll likely get ten trainings a year. You'll get, and that'll be ten trainings in Sheldon. There'll be ten trainings in Orange City, and ten trainings in Sioux Center, and ten trainings in Rock Rapids. You'll also get, uh, X amount of surprise inspections. We want this person to actually show up in our town, find our guys doing work, and then let us know are they doing, you know, are they doing it safely or not? What can we do to improve our work? What can we do to improve our work site safety? Do we have all the proper signage up? Is somebody using, you know, turn their back to traffic, or, I don't know, I'm not coming up with good examples. But we want them to expect our guys working, and let us know what we can do a better job of. We're looking at mock OSHA inspections as part of it. Just, just trying to clean up as many things as we possibly can. And when we sit in the room and talk about it right now, all four of us will tell you that we all talk about safety, we all stress safety, we all try to do a good job. But it's something that, if you're not held accountable by a active safety person, you can shuffle it to the bottom sometimes quicker than what you should. We just, we just, as people who manage other people in the utility business, feel like we can do a better job, but none of us can justify doing it alone because of the cost $110,000 be associated with it. But if we join in, then it becomes palatable, I think, if we join in and do it together.
Well, it sounds like the structure has a list of consumables that you could manage from, so you know what to expect, you know, and when to expect it.
And the board, if we went the NCC route, the board of directors would be responsible for the performance evaluations and/or hiring and/or firing actually of that individual if they were, you know. So, but that's not decided yet. I mean, we took proposals from both. We are not saying right now whether we're 100% IMU route or 100% utilizing NCC at this point.
Appreciate the insights, thank you.
So is that a yes I have? And if, and if we move?
Yes.
I can consume those dollars within my budgets?
I don't think anyone is against that.
Okay.
So yes, please consider, please continue.
Thank you. We'll report back later, once, once we have more. But we got to start somewhere.
Absolutely. Okay, thanks, Todd. Next in our agenda, discussion of filling the city manager position. I asked for copies of the ad that we had used a couple of years ago, and I would like for you to read through those. Obviously, we will change the date on when we would hope to receive these resumes. But I'd like to have you read that over, and then I would like to have these ads begun to run in the local newspapers, as well as Sioux Cities, Sioux Falls, Des Moines, and the Iowa League of Cities. And I would like to also start to pursue the possible use of using a firm to assist us in this pursuit. We're in a busy time, and I think that may be helpful to us, to find a firm to help us out. And I know there's a couple of places, a couple of firms that reached out to us two years ago, but I would like to talk with, get references on what company we might, should use if we decide to go with a headhunter. So before you, is the city manager position ad that I would like to have run in the newspapers, do you see any changes? I would like to say email resume cover letter with request to remain confidential, and a list of references. What data are we thinking that we would like to cut it off?
I guess the question I have, if we're going to pursue the services of a headhunter, do we want to wait before we start advertising? Because what happens, we advertise, get resumes in, and then we decide to go with the headhunter?
Turn them over to the headhunter. Yeah, I guess, and that's, what would you, what route?
I guess I'm not convinced at this point of the, I'm open to the idea of a headhunter to say it that way.
I can gather quotes.
But that would be, to me, would be the first step. If that's the route we go, then don't waste our resources in touching an entity in this route.
And I will do that. I can, I mean, I can do that, too. We can reach out and determine what would be the best firm to use, and get in.
I guess I could speak from some experience in regards to timeline on this, if you do use a recruitment firm. It could move fairly quickly. And probably quicker than airing it out, you know, locally and whatnot as well. So I don't think you're giving away time, is my point, by us looking and deciding on whether we're going to use recruitment firm or not. Because I think they'll make up for it soon as our decision's made. We'll have several of them to choose from very quickly, so.
I'd like to have a firm just to help us with the legwork of it all.
I think you have to look at scope of services, too. You have people that find people, and you have companies that find people and also match based on your community priorities.
Right.
Needs, which.
Similar to what the school had done.
Correct.
So I would like to go through that similar process to what they have done. I guess I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page of, let's save the ads in the local papers, pursue the use of a firm. Obviously, I'm not just going to pick a firm and go.
I would also say through experience that there is differences in structure fees between.
Oh, yeah.
Recruitment firms as well. So there is, there is some value in making sure that you're, you look at that competitively as well.
Absolutely. I'll keep in touch as I start to pursue that, because there's different. But again, I would like to go on the recommendations, like through the Iowa League of Cities, if there's any places that they, firms, companies that they would recommend to us to use, so.
A lot of times, associations have specific firms that work within their scope.
Yep.
So that it's just a little advice there as well, so.
Okay. So then in the meantime, as we're trying to find a company to help guide us through this, if you would take with you, then the descriptions of the position profile, read through that, and see if there's anything that we might have been missing, or anything that should be taken out. Just be good to have that in the back of your mind, you know, see if there's anything we're missing, as that's information we'll share as we begin the pursuit to recruit a new city manager. So I'll start to gather that information and send it out via email as well. Okay. Last on our agenda is comments. One comment I'd like to share with you, Council, is at our next council meeting, June 20, we will have a discussion-type workshop at the end of that meeting with our garbage haulers. Sean and I, and Brad, and Pete have met with the garbage haulers off and on for the past few months, discussing ideas. Some good ideas have come up, and now we need to get together and have a little discussion workshop all together to get us all on the same page, so that July 31 is when their contract is up with us. So we'd like to get everything figured out, so that we can communicate with the public on any changes that might be coming from that, but also welcome the public to come on June 20 to our 4:30 council meeting, and we will make sure we put that out at the end of the agenda, to have a discussion format with the garbage haulers. Any other comments? Are we playing ball anytime soon, Greg?
August 15, which is a council meeting night.
Perfect.
Meaning you're going to have to keep the agenda short, because it starts at 5:30.
Okay, I can keep it short, no problem. August 15, we are playing ball. Who's home? Are we home this time?
Well, that'll be probably by the flip of a coin.
All right.
The details are still being worked out.
All right.
The SCDC is working on all of the details.
Wonderful. So August 15, pencil that in, start warming up your bats, throwing arms, et cetera. I do have a pinch hitter for me, I will run, he will bat for me. Just kidding. Thank you, Greg, for lighting that up, it's going to be fun. Any other comments this way to my right? Sean, anything? Micah, Tom, Brad, Pete?
Any movement on 16th Street?
No.
Okay, that's all I have.
Simple. I like that.
We're currently in conversations with the contractor. Without getting into too much detail, they have an extension, which we have said no.
I like your answer, Pete. Sean, anything? Brad?
Nope.
All right, Lyle, Todd, we've all had a long discussion. Kurt, anything? Awesome, thank you so much, then.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. And a roll call, please.
Hangers.
Hi.
Ken.
Hi.
Keels.
Hi.
Brewster.
Hi.
Hamel.
Hi.
We are adjourned. Thanks, Pete, for agreeing.